I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, June 2, 2025, to order it this time. And we'll start by asking our county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSelm's, to provide the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, today as we declare June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, we pray our community will play an active role in protecting the quality of life for each and every older adult and take positive action to promote the well-being of our older citizens. We also pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize the elected officials with us today. Mayor Holly Ridge, Mr. Pete Harnean, Town Alderman from North Topsa Beach, Rick Grant, Register of Deeds, Ms. Amiga Jarman, and Sheriff Chris Thomas, as well. So we appreciate everyone being here this morning. Right now, we ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode, and we'll move to Item 1 for the adoption of the agenda. If we have a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item 2, approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none. Motion carries. So we'll start with Item 3, Presentations this morning. And the first one will be a proclamation, and our county manager, Mr. David Smitherman, will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elder Abuse Awareness Month 2025. Whereas Onslow County joins the world in recognizing World Elder Abuse Awareness Month every June because protecting our county's vulnerable adults is a community responsibility, and all citizens are charged under state law to report suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation to their local Department of Social Services. And whereas elder abuse can take many forms, including physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, as well as neglect, abandonment, financial exploitation, and in this current fiscal year, Onslow County Department of Social Services assessed 700 reports of abuse, neglect, or exploitation of vulnerable adults. And whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse, and the way we treat our older citizens reflects our values as a society, it is our shared responsibility to ensure our vulnerable adults receive the support and protection they deserve. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about elder abuse and neglect, and promote treating our vulnerable adults with respect and dignity while looking out for the well-being of our vulnerable citizens and valuing their wealth of experience and wisdom. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes June 2025 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and encourages all citizens to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for every vulnerable adult by learning the signs of elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation, and by raising awareness about this important community issue presented on this the second day of June 2025.
Representatives from Onslow County Social Services will accept this proclamation, and Vice Chairman Robin Knapp will present.
Hey, good morning. Just wanted to touch base on this. This is kind of dear to my heart. You know, there's a couple of things in this world that are horrible. One of them is the sexual exploitation of children, abuse of children, rape cases, things of that nature. And I've seen plenty of it in 27 years in law enforcement. But one of the worst things in the world is elder abuse. Now, from where I come from, my mother's Korean, my father's from Louisiana. In our Korean society, if there was any disrespect for elderly people, you were basically shot. That's just the way it was. You just don't do it. I've seen in Korea, when I visited there, especially with my grandmother, that people, guys that are 35 years old, your grandmother, you know, she can't walk, they would actually give her a pee back ride everywhere she went. That's just the kind of respect. And nobody in the house would even break bread until the grandmother or the grandfather sat down first, gave the blessing, and then they ate first. And so I think it's very important for Onslow County. When you look at the elderly people, you know, I had my father in an assisted living home for several, several years. And every time I would walk into that assisted living facility, I would think, and I would see all the people there that were not being visited by any friends, relatives, or anything like that. And a lot of the people were just quiet. They just sat there and ate their meals. They did their daily routine. But you walk in there, you see 70 people in this facility. You ever think for just a minute how much knowledge and wisdom is in that room that's all bottled up that you can't really extract from them? These are people with living memories. These are people with a livid past. You know, they've got family members. And the thought of leaving them and abandoning them without visiting them or taking care of them is, to me, is heart-wrenching. And so I think this is a very noble cause. I want to applaud Social Services for making sure that they take care of our elderly, because elderly people in this country are the ones that set the foundation for the rest of us. And that goes for our veterans, too. So whatever you do, you know, if you see an elderly person with a cane or a wheelchair, take the moment to stop and let them through the door first. Hold the door for them. You know, assist them with whatever they can, because these people can't do what they could 40 years ago. And I'm already in that elderly category, or at least I'm approaching that elderly category. And I'm very fortunate. I have children that respect that. They understand that. And we need to do it as a society. So on behalf of the Commissioners, I want to thank Department of Social Services for what you do and for taking care of our elderly people and in making sure their lives are a lot better. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jeffrey Brown. I'm the Deputy Director of Department of Social Services. This amazing team behind me is the Adult Protective Services Team of Onslow County. They do absolutely heroic work day in and day out. And it is an extreme pleasure to be part of this team and to guide them through the work that we do each and every day. One interesting fact that I think everybody needs to be aware of as we all, many of us in the room, approach our elderly years is to keep in mind that, according to AARP, by 2031, there will be more people over the age of 65 in North Carolina than there will be under the age of 18. So as we think about those shifting demographics in our state across the country, we need to keep in mind that the cases of abuse, neglect, and exploitation that we see are just going to continue to rise as that population begins to expand. So we are grateful to the Commission each and every day for their support and for the help that we get. We look forward to continuing this relationship and working with y'all as we do our work day in and day out. One thing I want to make everybody aware of, June 26, Onslow County will be celebrating its World Elder Abuse Awareness Day right here at the Government Center. Commissioner Foster will be there joining us. Senator Lozara will be our keynote speaker. We will have The Clouder Group, which is a documentary film company out of California who's been doing a lot of work over the last couple of years to do documentary films about adult protective services and elder abuse. They'll be here screening one of their films and doing a talkback. So it's going to be a really fun, exciting day. We will have vendors. We'll have food. We'll have all of that. So we hope everybody can join us on the 26th from 10 to 2 right here at the Government Center. So thank you all very much for this.
Thank you. Jessica Gardner, who's the Director of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension on Onslow County, will be coming up to present the annual report to the people, which will highlight the hard work and commitment North Carolina Cooperative Extension has exhibited over the past year to the citizens of Onslow County. Ms. Gardner?
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Today I get the honor of presenting to you the 2024 Cooperative Extension Report to the People. This report is just a chance for me to give an update and share some data that speaks to the impact that our office is making in Onslow County. As a reminder, Cooperative Extension's mission is to extend research-based knowledge to all communities and transform science into everyday solutions to improve the lives and grow our states. We take the needs that arise in Onslow County and empower people through education to help make Onslow County a thriving community. We do majority of our work in three main program areas. Agriculture, we work with farmers, producers, and home gardeners. Food and nutrition, we do a lot of work in food safety, cooking programs with youth and adults. And then 4H Youth Development, the largest youth development organization in the nation through public speaking, leadership, and hands-on exploration to help ensure positive outcomes for tomorrow's leaders. So although Cooperative Extension began in 1914, primarily working with farmers and youth, over the years, we've evolved to stay relevant, to meet the needs of the changing society. So today, we try our best to work with all sections of the population, and we do that through lawn and garden diagnostics. So we help people address issues. We do that in disaster response and preparation. So last year, over the devastation of Helene, our office coordinated and distributed over 1,000 bales of haze to producers on the western side of the state. We work with home education and families. So a lot of home buyers that come to the area help get them settled. And then community and rural development, we do that a lot through the farmer's market and connecting our community with those farmers. So everything we do is need-based, but we operate within a framework that speaks to our strategic plan initiatives. So we use these goals to categorize what we're doing. So in the Onslow County Strategic Plan, we do community vitality. So all the programs we do were increasing participation in youth and adult programming. A focused and sustainable future, we want to empower farmers and producers with best management practices so they're efficient and profitable, and we can conserve those rural acres. And then healthy and safe communities, food-based and nutrition work to help empower people to make healthy lifestyle changes to lead to healthier lives and a thriving community and get us out of the bottom of those health rankings. So that's how we fit into the Onslow County Strategic Plan. We also report out to statewide initiatives and guidelines. So I've kind of married those two together here. So community vitality, that's our 4H programming, adult programming. Everything we do is those hands-on programs for the community. Focused and Sustainable Future, we want to equip farmers with best practice and management solutions so they're efficient and they stay profitable. And then Healthy and Safe Communities, increasing physical activity, decreasing sugar and sodium consumption, and chronic disease prevention, as well as food safety certifications. So that's a few of how they fit together, but this is really our impact in action and the fun part of the job. So this is an example of over 2,000 programs that our office hosted in 2024. A lot of the work that we do is educating around the food web and local foods. Especially important for youth to know where their food comes from. So this first picture is an example of our staff and volunteers working with the school garden to get these children experiences of planting and harvesting food so they know where their food comes from. 4H livestock opportunities, it's great for youth to get that hands-on experience with animals, but it also teaches responsibility, public speaking, and leadership as they complete that project and showcase those animals. That third picture is an example of some of the on-farm demos that we do, or on-farm research. So like I said, a lot of our research comes from the university. Our soil, our climate, our bugs are so much different than what they do on campus and a lot of the research stations. So it's really meaningful for the farmers when we get to build a partnership and do some work on-farm so we know exactly what will work here in Onslow County. And then a donation station, so connecting people with their food web at the farmer's market. So this is an opportunity for the community to work together to donate fresh local produce and provide that to food banks. So it really helps the farmer, helps the community, again, that fresh produce. A couple more. The first picture is our Discovery Gardens Growing Minds Program. So that's a field trip for all 3rd graders. They come to the Discovery Garden. They learn all about seeds and pollinators, edible plants, composting, so much more. And it really sets the stage for appreciating the environment at a young age. The next is our Row Crops Agent, working with youth, giving them hands-on experience learning about soybeans. And then another educator doing some food-based learning in a classroom, highlighting local fruits and vegetables so that students are empowered. They learn that they actually do like vegetables, and then they take that home, influence on their parents. And we're increasing consumption and incorporating fresh local produce into diets in new ways. And then lastly, our FNAP educator, doing a hands-on cooking class for adults. Her classes are aimed at low-income populations, and it really is cooking skills. So I'll just share a quick comment from one of her graduates in a class. She said that she now makes the chicken nuggets at home with her grandson, and he likes them better than McDonald's. So they're making choices to eat healthier foods at home because of a program that Ms. Page did. So again, that's just a really brief overview of some of the programs we do and the impact in the community. So over the past year, from 2023 to 2024, we've had a 28% increase in all programs across all areas. We've had 28% more learning opportunities, 72% increase in clients reached, 27%.
Normally, we average 1.26 deaths per year. And in the previous two years, you see that there is an orange color. Those represent pediatric deaths. And so we do distinguish adult deaths from pediatric deaths. What we know about the people who passed away from flu in Onslow County is that none of them were vaccinated. All of them were over the age of 60. 90% of these individuals were white. We had a 60-40 male-to-female split. And then when we compare our stats locally to what we saw throughout the state, our peak of flu deaths was in that first week of February. And then the North Carolina death peak was just right after that, on 2/8. We had 10 deaths locally. There were 535 deaths across the state. We made up about 1.87% of North Carolina deaths. Overall, Onslow County makes up about 1.93% of the overall North Carolina population. So really, we're right in line population-wise. That's not correcting for age or any other type of adjustment that we might do, but it gives you an idea of that we're falling about in line with what we would expect. Although it's an odd time to be talking about it, it is important to note from this that it is very important to get a flu vaccine each season. None of the people who perished in Onslow County had a flu vaccine. And even when it's not a perfect match to prevent disease, it's very effective at reducing hospitalization and keeping people from becoming so sick that they require hospitalization or that they die. It's important to stay home when you're sick, avoid contact with those who are ill, and kind of isolate yourself. You know, avoid going out whenever you are sick. Hand hygiene is that universal message that we always push. It's important to clean your hands frequently. The way that respiratory viruses get into our body is through our eyes, nose, and mouth. We touch something, we touch our eyes, nose, or mouth, and that's how it enters our body. That's the reason hand hygiene is so important. And then that we practice respiratory etiquette, covering our coughs and our sneezes to make sure that we're not passing those viruses along. There's no action that we requested. We just wanted to make sure that we shared this information and that we promote the messages of vaccination and that everyone protect themselves from the flu each year. Thank you for the opportunity to present this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Now we'll move to our proposed fiscal year '25-'26 budget. And Mr. David Smitherman, our county manager, will provide the presentation to the board this morning. Ms. Smitherman?
Thank you, sir. I hope I can do as well as Jessica Gardner. She did a fantastic job. Would you like to come do this? So it's my pleasure to share with you today formally the work of six months and dozens and dozens, many dozens, of people, particularly the Finance Department and the Department of Strategic Management, that were the key resources that helped put this budget together for me, with me. This budget includes no new taxes. It is an increase of both general fund and the gross, all funds categories. Most of this is driven by, growth is driven by state and federal program money that is coming to us. But we do have $8 million of revenue growth in this budget. And we had about a 2, somewhere a little over 2% increase in real estate values and a total tax-based increase of about 3% to $22.3 billion of taxable property. Here's where the money comes from. It's overwhelmingly local property taxes and then our share of state sales taxes. That's where 70% of our income comes from. Where does the money go? Overwhelmingly, public safety and education. Not quite equal to the revenue coming in on the tax side of the house, but almost all of our local taxes go straight to education and public safety. We are in extremely healthy financially. We're extremely healthy local government, largely the benefit of COVID. Not only did the period of COVID experience tremendous revenue growth through tax, through sales taxes, but it also was tremendous revenue through the various federal programs. And the county used that money very wisely to invest in quite a bit of services, but we also came out of that in a very healthy financial position. And the board, upon discovering that in our FY '22 audit, I would say, the board wisely set aside a lot of that money for future uses that it wanted to accomplish, uses around school construction, emergency preparedness, and particularly capital. The organization went, had quite a few lean years in capital investments, and we are just about to catch up, and I would say at the end of FY '26, be in a very good position with our capital maintenance and equipment. We are a very low-tax place to live. We are the 10th most affordable out of 100 counties in North Carolina. We are 10th most affordable. It's important to realize this because the rate does not indicate how much you actually pay. So this is based upon what people, what citizens pay per family, per household, to their local government. And it's adjusted based upon the relative income. If you look at the RAL score, we're about 13th least expensive. When you compare to that with our ability to pay, we're 10th least expensive county in North Carolina to operate. How we came up with this budget is, for those that were here last year, it all begins with your retreat in January. And at your retreat, you reaffirmed your vision and purpose and goals for the organization. You reaffirmed the mission statement, and you reaffirmed our core values, which have just been refreshed and became our REACH value set that we are basing our management of the organization on. And then you adopted, you finished reviewing and then adopted your strategic plan for the next five years. And this budget is a reflection of that strategic plan, pure and simple. And it is the guide we used to develop the outcomes that are articulated in the budget message. But then finally, you told us, these are the big four things that we want you to focus on, leadership team, during the next 12 months. Those four things are significant parks improvements, the reimagining of our parks system, and an influx of effort and resources in bringing them up to where they need to be to match the needs of our growing constituency, which is growing in a different way than it has in the past. Now we have to start thinking about recreation from the position of a senior. We have an outsized number of seniors and retirees in our community compared to where we were 15 years ago. And we don't have adequate services for that population group. Likewise, the young family is the largest demographic. And I mean, young, 30-somethings, several children in our school system. We want to lean into, you want to lean into more activities, better resources, better athletics programming, better utilization of our parks for that demographic, and that's reflected. So we have general parks improvements. We have a project called the Indoor Recreation Facility, which we have just begun interviewing firms to help us figure out what that is and where it should go and what services should be administered through that facility. The first phase of that planning will be intense community engagement to find out exactly what our citizens value in that project. Here's your vision and mission. The community of choice in coastal North Carolina is what we aim to become. And we're going to do that through delivering exceptional services with good governance and fiscal responsibility. Our core values are resiliency, excellence, accountability, customer service, and honesty. And we are reimagining and remaking and administering the organization through that lens of this value set. And then, of course, finally, here's your strategic plan, which was just printed a few weeks ago and has begun being distributed throughout the county. The four strategic focus areas of the plan are being a fiscally responsible government, a high-performing government. We have emphasis on community vitality. We want this to be the best place for families to live, work, play, and grow. We want a sustainable future. We want to focus on doing the right thing, making sure our decisions are good, and that we are actively... we are actively managing the sustainability of our environment. And then, finally, we want our community to be healthy and safer, and we have many initiatives aligned to those goals. These were those four major priorities that you tasked us with this year. Two of those I've already discussed. The third is a community resource hub, imagining, which again, this is, this is a blue-sky project, a white-paper project. We're trying to figure out, using the library and the museum as the anchor, what is the suite of services that would be synergistic if housed in a hub-type environment? It may be necessary that we have community hubs in all of our communities, and we have pop-up tax department during tax payment and listing seasons, or we have pop-up social services, foster events. There's a variety of things that we can do, and we're thinking about this from a very top, high level. And again, those decisions will be made with the community's input, and the intense work on the community hub for this year will pretty much solely focus around community engagement and feedback. And finally, in order to get that community engagement feedback, we have to promote more participation from our constituency. And the board made one of their top four goals is to intensely increase our communication efforts slash citizen education efforts around county government. And there are proposals in this budget to do that as well as all four of these priorities. The theme of this budget is innovation and efficiency. I found it opportune to grab on the coattails of the federal election and Doge to focus our work, even though we were already focused on innovation and efficiency. Let's show the commissioners, let's show the public what this means to us. We think it's very important to have modern and high-performing systems and processes for our citizens' interaction with us. We have the systems, and we have the desire, but we don't have the efficiency nailed down. And what we want to do, utilizing a new initiative called the Onslow Innovation Lab, is to have a team of people whose only focus is innovation and efficiency. We want two things out of this group. We want to be able to go in, and they, in an ad hoc way, have been doing this, but now, we're forming them as a formal work team, where departments can call upon the lab, as we call it, to come take a look at a process in their organization. And the first one to do that was Carter Metcalf in our Planning and Development Department. And it was about finding efficiency for our developers, our contractors, and our residents to process construction permits. And he invited our business process analyst to his office, and she spent several days triaging how a project makes it through, from the first telephone call to the issuance. And she designed new processes, found efficiencies, and then, worked with our systems engineers to align the, in this case, InnerGov, a software package, to fully automate the input and output of a business permit or a construction permit. In other words, on July 1st, you can get a permit without ever coming in this building. You can submit reams of drawings for a four-story building, and we can, we can review those and give feedback electronically without coming in this building. So, it's a much more efficient way to get things done. It caters to, it caters to the local economy. We know our local economy is largely based upon the output of these permits and the construction activity of new homes, and we do not want to be the choke point in that process. Imagine putting that level of emphasis on all of our processes, and our processes are hundreds in number. So, we're focusing the lab initially on the internal systems that we can base future improvement on. If we don't have clean data and actively managing our databases, we do not have a basic foundation to pivot into the power of the systems that we own and operate. So, we'll be cleaning up our data. We'll be optimizing the tools we've already, that we already own. Laserfish is a legacy product that's been around probably decades in this organization, and it's used for this over here and for that over there, and the sheriff does this with it, and finance does that with it. But we don't have a comprehensive understanding of how this tool can improve our organization as a whole. So, we will be optimizing the use of Laserfish throughout our organization, not only optimizing what we're presently doing, but finding other ways to solve problems using this tool. This will, this team will set up the systems to monitor your strategic plan so that we have real-time updating, that we present quarterly to you on the progress of all of these initiatives. We are ready to dip our toe into artificial intelligence. It's being used in a very small and sporadic, fractured way in our government right now. I use it for this, other people use it for that, but we don't know how the organization should be using it. And this, this group, the Innovation Lab, will be proposing how we implement AI technology in our organization over the next few years. And then, finally, the general maximizing of capability throughout our software platforms. We, we in government, but we in society rarely use the products we purchase to their fullest potential, and we're going to make sure that we don't do that with taxpayer money at Onslow County Government. We'll also be making some new investments in innovation around other tools that will help us move forward. There's a $300,000 public safety drone program in the budget. Sheriff Thomas and I discussed how we roll that out, and we're looking at this fall, piloting the project. Go ahead in a budget for the full project, but only start on a pilot-controlled, and I don't mean pilot, the drone pilot, I mean, a prototype system where we deploy two or three for specific uses and discover what we don't know about the systems before we deploy them countywide and add to them later. We're also spending $68,000 to improve the automation of, of the ability of our IT department to manage the probably thousand machines or more that they are responsible for. Currently, you have to be on our network to get that type of push-pull maintenance with our systems, and this software upgrade will let us attach to our systems regardless of what domain they reside at that moment. And then, finally, we will, are two things, both slightly related to geographic information systems, which will be a big, big, big foundational undergirding of all of our business intelligence going forward, using through spatial analysis and through spatial geographic representation the data that we have that can help this board and our staff make informed decisions. The data is on our systems. We can't get to it. And when we get to it, it's not necessarily in a format we can use, but using GIS as a common bridge to bring this stuff together, we think it is the basis of where we're going to provide actionable information from our systems. And likewise, GPS units on our environmental health cars and equipment, one, so that we can maintain safety, but also so that we can best maintain quality data about site-specific locations where environmental health concerns or solutions may exist. Also, from the technology bend, we are increasing our resources, our human resources dedicated to these efforts. These staff that I'm proposing here are part of our ITS department to give them additional capacity to do some of this work going forward. For increased communication efforts, there are two new positions in this budget, but what's most exciting to me is the incorporation of tourism into our communication efforts. Effective July 1, we will reengage tourism as a county function. We're currently contracting that function to the Chamber of Commerce. It will come, in fact, it'll be, tourism will be housed in the administrative suite upstairs, and we will work with Salem to coordinate and find synergistic opportunities to combine our, our tourism and communication efforts with a single, based upon a single plan. So, in other words, we're not running tourism over here and communications over here now. Tourism is part of communications, and communications helps tourism get their work done, and tourism helps communications get its work, its work done. The only difference in the, in the effort is we are calling on different constituencies, but it's definitely communication, communication external of our county, communication internal to our citizens. What we expect to get, our plan to get and want to promote, to receive from our increased communication efforts are better community engagement, more pride in our community, more citizen ownership of the outcomes of our community. We would like to build trust with our community that, and be transparent and ask questions and receive input, and make sure that any question or concern on a citizen's mind can be answered. And just general awareness and education of the role of county government. I think there's a big gap in our general societal understanding of what local government does, or government in general, and it's our job, I believe, as, as public servants, to put effort into that civic education process. And I'll bring up some of the ways that we're going to be doing that in a moment. There's no single way to communicate, and we know for every diverse constituency, there's a different way to communicate. We have to figure out how to reach tourists. We have to figure out how to reach seniors, how to reach young families. Those three demographics do not get their news from the same places necessarily. So, we have to figure out and tailor the messages on the right platforms to get to the folks we're trying to communicate with. We're also increasing our relation, our partnerships in our relationships with our municipalities. We have three municipalities currently working with us to consider combining with county departments their efforts on a localized scale. For instance, the town of Richlands is very interested in our Planning and Development Department doing all of the planning and zoning for Richlands, everything that's non-legislative. Their planning board and BZA, they stay in place, they manage that locally, but the processes are done here with Carter Metcalf's group. Holly Ridge is interested in code enforcement, and Swansboro is interested in our Information Technology Services Department running the local network for the town of Swansboro, and we're happy to pursue those ideas, and I anticipate that they will be fruitful for both parties. With the city of Jacksonville, we just launched a summer internship program that will be kicking off in a couple of months. It's being advertised right now, and we have a goal of by 2026, having a slate of athletic services that we might be able to combine with the city of Jacksonville, and those are active conversations. This is a product that city manager Josh Ray and I came up with, and there are other ways we want to do this, that we want to reach people about the purpose and function and, and responsibility and duty of local government, but we feel the best way to do that is in our school systems. And so, we're going to work with upcoming 10- to 12-year-olds to get inside of both of our city and county organizations to learn not only about what we do, but the career opportunities for them as they progress. We also, and speak to it later, Josh and I would very much like to be in our school systems throughout the year, providing local government civic education to the right age group. I don't know if that's ninth or 10th graders. I feel like it's maybe, maybe it's eighth. I don't know. But we want to make sure they understand what local government does. Civic education is not taking place like it did when I know I was in school, and I think that we, as the public, as government leaders, have a duty here, and we want to lean forward in that with our school systems' help. This year, you have a new nonprofit and tourism funding policy that, the funding recommendations this year are completely in line with that funding policy that you adopted some time ago. It is a, it is a competitive merit-based process that is open to all. It is scored objectively based upon criteria that was developed to align the requests and the value of those requests with your strategic plan. And those, you can get up to two years of funding via this program until you can apply for a ongoing, I call it, oh, vendor status. I call it agency status. It's a vendor status, like United Way and the Chamber are established vendors, and they don't have to go through this process every year. So, what we, two things we hope to accomplish, our nonprofit funding is bridge funding to help nonprofit organizations grow and do great work, and then, those that we see a sustainable commitment necessary to reach your goals, we have a different program for that. You can see that over the past five years, the funding of outside agencies through tourism has greatly increased. Based upon your funding criteria, we've recommended very similar funding for each category at about 1.1 million in nonprofit and tourism respectively. Here's some of the things that we're going to do to invest in our organization this year so that it is ready to do this work. And we spent a whole year getting ready, right? We'd done a lot of planning. Planning is now getting implemented in funding and actions. One thing that will continue every year is our VIEW program, which is intended to ensure that our organization is of the highest, in the highest competitive posture to recruit and retain the best employees we can get. And here are some investments we're making in that program this year. The new items are career progression and certification pay. The other items are carriesovers, carryovers from last, well, actually, employee recognition program. A new recognition program is going to start off January 1 of 2006. But we're also compensating employees for attaining levels of education and certification that is beyond the standard of their job and provides value back to us and the community. And we will be incentivizing that, and we will be having opportunities for people to be promoted within their grade, within their department. You don't have to leave your position and get a new job to be promoted. There are, will be steps within many of our job categories to allow progress, career progression with Onslow County. Lots of new positions proposed in lots of areas across the board, governing bodies, Sheriff's Department, solid waste, health, AFM. One big position initiative is our project manager position to help us manage these construction projects that are ongoing and to come. We have not dedicated appropriate resource to that, so that is a new initiative in this budget that requires a new position. Another place we're putting positions, two positions this year is in the Community Paramedic Program. The aim of the Community Paramedic Program is multifold. One, it is to assist patients upon discharge from the hospital, to get their meds, to get to their doctor's appointments, and to be healthy in their recovery. Some big-time service not only for the hospital, which greatly improves their readmission rates, but also improves, ultimately improves their scores, and it's a great benefit for our citizens and those that are infirmed and unable to, that don't have a support structure, to stay healthy. That's half of the program. The other half of the program is to reduce the number of times an ambulance goes to a scene and turns around and comes home without a patient. We want to make sure the right resources are on the scene at the right time so that the other resources are available for higher acuity calls when they are called upon. You see that less than 50% of the time that we go to a scene, do we transport a patient. So, we believe by deploying QRVs, changing dispatch protocols in the 911 center and through other means, we can reduce the number of times we, we send the ambulance that doesn't get utilized and increase the number of ambulances available for high-acuity calls. Also, propose increasing the staffing at Bear Creek Fire Station to go to a 24-hour paid operation. operation. We're basically missing calls when we're not there. The volunteerism in that area has decreased to the point that the volunteers are missing calls in our after-hours holidays, weekends, time slots, which are when we do not have staff. And seven additional firefighters will bring Bear Creek to a fully staffed, fully 24 hours, seven days a week staffed station. Some of you that have been around a while are aware of the dramatic changes in the phone volume at DSS when Medicaid expansion went online. And you see that we were chasing a tiger by the tail in FY '23. We had, we were missing most of the calls. We just didn't have the processes, the staff, the systems to handle the influx. And we've consistently been eating into that. And we're down to 16,660 calls that go to voicemail basically, or that we don't get to. What we've been, the reason we've been able to make dramatic improvement on that in three years is we've put several temporary positions in play. We are suggesting that we make those temporary positions full-time positions. Not only does it save the county money, it increases consistency, increases the quality of person that we can recruit to the organization. And we think that that institutional knowledge being in place will help us get that number further down. So we are basically taking several part-time temp positions, working 11 months per year because they can't work 12. And we're just making them 12 months a year, we're taking off the fees attached to temporary workers and we're coming out with a much more efficient, better solution for the long term. We are using capital reserve this year like we have in past years. Capital reserve is our highest utilized reserve account. It gets utilized the most during the year and replenished the most during the next year. It is how we balance the budget to get things done that are multi-year investments, not single-year operational investments. So we continue our vehicle replacement plan. I think there's about nine, a million dollars in that going toward the sheriff's department alone for vehicle, maintaining our vehicle replacement plan. We are increasing our maintenance on facilities that have been delayed over the past years. We have quite a few capital requests in several departments. We are setting aside money to build three EMS stations. This is the project that this, that a previous board initiated several years ago, but was never funded. We are funding those projects. We are putting funds aside for the planning and short-term rehabilitation of our park systems, including Heinz Farm and Onslow Pines Park. And we're putting away a million dollars to begin the planning and design efforts on the indoor recreation facility. So while many of these funds will not be consumed during the FY '26 year, they are appropriated, which means that we have initiated these projects and begun the planning stages, the step that was missed on the three EMS stations that have remained unfunded for the last four or so years. You can look at this in your leisure and you have more detail in your budget books. Here's some of the things that we fund in our current year CIP, some of those monies that will be expended, that come from capital reserves that will be expended this year. And here's, so every year we have this, the current expense capital is what the school systems call it, current expense capital. These are things that cost over 20 grand that require, they are usually one-time and will be finished in a single year. The bigger projects, the EMS stations, the fire departments, the schools, that's always the biggest one, they get funded through debt. We put money down on them to get us started and then we incurred debt. We are getting ready to issue debt and refinance debt in a couple of weeks that will bring our total debt load to about $220 million, which is far below the capacity that this organization has. We've not issued a lot of debt in the past five or six years. But the school system just brought us a building plan that's up to almost 400,000, $400 million. And you cannot do that without debt. So we, we have a schedule to meet the capital improvement plan, which you will talk about in greater detail in your workshop, to finance that plan by issuing debt every other year. We've issued debt the last two years in a row because the projects demanded it. What we want to do is regulate project pace to maintain solvency, to maintain capacity and ability to pay. So we are scheduling your future debt issuances every other year. And we'll get into the details of, of what these projects are, but generally it's almost 400 million for the schools, 70 million for the community college, 75 million for the community hub project, 40 million for the recreation complex, 50 million over 10 years for parks, and then a general 10 million, 8 million, excuse me, over 10 years for general maintenance of all the facilities you currently own. General maintenance may be upgrades, it may be expansions, it may be acquisitions, just like the sheriff's training facility or center that we're calling the Morton Building that we haven't closed on yet, that's how you pay for those, in these off, these facility needs, 10 million dollar issuances every other year. I spent some time this spring on the island, inspecting our beach accesses. I spent some time this weekend enjoying a beach access. A county-free beach access. And we need to invest in those things. It's tough out there in that wind and salt air. And we've gone a while since we've put good money in our accesses, particularly number two and number four, which are the big ones, the facilities that have vendors. They're in need of repair. Lattices falling off, you know, rusty nails, this is not the material, appropriate material choice for this facility. It needs to have a new skin or exterior. And what this one in particular needs about $300,000 worth of improvements to get it to where it needs to be. We need to pull up the old hatteras ramps that are buried down in the sand and get them back, put back together. We need to rebuild five of our dune crosswalks. I encourage you, this is, this is not comprehensive. This is what we need to do to make sure that the people come this summer and say, man, they need some maintenance. Come back next summer and say, wow, I'm coming back here. Because if they come back twice and there's disregarded structures, they'll go to a different beach. This is the economic engine of Onslow County and we want to make sure it continues that way. And we consider this million and a half dollar tourism investment, money well spent. We do propose one fee increase in this budget. And we will probably continue to look at this every year because the distance between expense and revenue continues to increase. Our permit fees, which are the lowest around and by design lower than the city of Jacksonville's, are not meeting our expenses. And so we have asked for about $200,000 worth of fee increases. It is to bring our residential permits in line with, more in line with what it, what we charge on the commercial side. And it's still well beneath doing business in many of our municipalities. So this is, it's been a while since we've increased this fee. There's details on how that fee gets implemented in the budget document, in the message. I want to spend a minute or two talking about what we did this year, what we are doing right now that is a result of what you told us to do two Januaries ago. The Economic Development Strategic Plan that you funded and initiated and coerced the city and Anwasa and the town at Holly Ridge into participating in with you is basically done. It's in final draft stage. I think I'm meeting with the executive committee this week to design a budget to implement the Economic Development Strategic Plan at JOED. We completed our EMS operational assessment and we have begun in earnest, in all categories, making improvements. And this budget makes more improvements to our EMS operations. We have increased our DSS office capacity by relocating approximately 100 employees to a building that we owned and that we re-secured from a lease and have put upgrades into and greatly solved the incredible space problems at our social services department where we have people alternating desks based upon the week of the month, working from home and working in very, not inappropriate, just not comfortable working conditions. The multipurpose building construction has been bid and is underway. It's in full demolition state right this minute, if you drive by there after today's meeting. This will be an incredible space, particularly for our seniors. Two-thirds of the space will be dedicated to senior recreation and enrichment. The other third, it will be dedicated to agricultural work, the most exciting of which is the teaching kitchen for our cooperative extension program. We fully implemented the merit pay system and the pay and study, pay and classification study, which brings us to a highly competitive position for our employees. And I did it today at 10:45 and I try to do it every Monday morning, welcome new employees to our organization and tell them, this is a great time to join Onslow County Government. Some of the performance statistics from this year, we have dramatically increased our spay and neuter statistics. We are doing three times the number of vaccinations and, well, spay and neuter, altering of cats and dogs than we have before. This is the only way to control the pet population, the unwanted pet population is spay and neuter, stop the reproduction and the cycle will stop. And one way we're doing that is through a community cat program where we are consistently reducing the number of animals being killed, but increasing the number being adopted. Our goal is to adopt animals. It's not to kill animals, it's to adopt animals, to reunite them with their rightful owner, to prevent unwanted births and to find animals new homes. One of the most exciting things we did this year was implement with complete success, I mean, far beyond, I think Chris Thomas would agree, far beyond our wildest expectations, the medical assisted treatment program in the jail. We've helped over 250 inmates wean off of pretty poor addiction, pretty bad addiction to very poor drugs. It is a continual effort, it doesn't stop when they leave the jail. But currently we have 48 people, we're at full capacity. We have one full cell block dedicated to the medically assisted treatment program. I have personally spoke with many of these inmates. These people, that 47% grew up with substance abuse in the home, 92% which have experienced multiple overdoses, I have been with them inside their cell block and heard their testimonies. And we are changing lives in this program. If we don't intervene, who will? This is a captive audience and what we want is for them never to come back, right? And this program, which we are, we are constantly evaluating and trying to understand what is best practice and how can we make this work, because it can't work just for 30 days while you're in the jail or 60 days while you're in the jail. It takes 12, nine to 12 months of continued sobriety to have a reasonable percentage chance of kicking the habit. So do we transfer these folks to our community paramedic program? Do we keep up with them throughout this 12 months and have a liaison relationship to keep them sober? What it sounds like to me is we're getting into the world of mental health work, the world that we were told 18 years ago by the general assembly they'd take care of. Well, now we're getting right back in it because nobody else is doing it. And 18 years ago, we said, these people, when you stop the state program for mental health, will end up in our jails and emergency rooms. And that's exactly where they are right now. So now what? We've been fortunate enough to get grants to do this work to date. Here's what we're going to do next year. Some of this I've already told you. Animal Service Clinic, we are going to contract with a veterinarian to come into our clinic and alter animals. There is not enough, there are not enough veterinarian services in this community to get animals, it took, I signed up to get my animals neutered and it was a three-month wait. We have to find ways to get this done quicker and we think having a day clinic, a one-day clinic a week at our animal shelter is a good way to help the veterinarian community with this large problem. We talked about the paramedic program expansion. Well, the biggest one here is the fire system strategic plan. We've learned a lot over the last year about the state of our fire service, which is a hybrid fire service consisting of nearly 100 paid employees plus all the municipal departments plus all the volunteers. So it's a very hybrid system, but it's not a system that we've ever looked at strategically from 100,000 feet and said, how do all these pieces work together? We've generally run the fire system by station, by station, by municipal, by county, by volunteer, but not coordinated that effort. We think the best effort from, for the next year is to work on a system-wide strategic plan that involves all parties, all stakeholders, citizens, volunteers, paid people, municipalities, and through intense, maybe year-long if necessary, community engagement work, putting the emphasis on feedback, 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 designing a system that we can all adopt, where everyone understands how this works, where we're going to be two years from now, where we're going to be 10 years from now, and we all sign on to the same program and path of progress. All those I just spoke to, and these projects are arranged by focus area, these are for the community vitality, no, healthy and safe community strategic focus area. These are community vitality. We've talked about several of these. One that I'll speak to in just a minute is our comprehensive resource sharing agreement with the school system. The tax, it's the same people that paid for all this stuff, right? Comes out of the same check. But yet we don't really collaborate well or well enough for the use of these taxpayer resources by the taxpayers. So we want to relook at how we share resources in our community that taxpayers pay for. And the others I already touched on, we've talked about economic development investments. We're proposing flat funding next year for JOED because the plan hadn't been adopted yet, you haven't seen it yet. And until you see it and adopt it, you know, I'm reticent to ask you for anything. But we are going to reserve an additional 275 at your discretion that once you get the strategic plan and you see what's going on, and if you decide to buy onto that, we've set aside some money to help do that, if that's what you choose to do. And I know that many in the community will be excited to hear that we are proposing an orphan road loans, loan fund. There are quite a few communities in this county that have been abandoned, abandoned by their developer, abandoned by the HOA, never properly transferred or formed. For a variety of reasons, we have a lot of orphan roads that are not municipal and they are not state-owned. Of course, in North Carolina counties do not own roads. But we can facilitate those homeowners associations to getting their roads improved. The hardest lift is coming up with the front-end money. Well, if we can come up with the front-end money to improve these roads and develop a repayment program with these citizens, we might be able to move the football on this problem. It's going to take a long, long time, but this is a step forward in that. We will, on our journey to become a high-performing government, we need to figure out where our human resources are, where they are appropriately allocated and where they not appropriately allocated. This initiative started over a year ago in a conversation with the sheriff. What struck me is that the whole organization needs this. It's probably, I remember when I was your interim manager 16 years ago, finding a study that was about 10 years old, that was done during Ron Lewis's period, where this was done, comprehensive staffing study. I'm not aware of it being done since then, that would have been in the mid 2000s, maybe early 2000s. Of course, we talked about the innovation lab and our desire to optimize all processes. We are currently in, under our fiscally responsible category, working with Coastal Carolina Community College to develop their capital plan as well as an annual funding plan, which there's a committee of this board that has already met once. a committee of this board that has already met once regarding this matter. We have a new debt management plan of which you've seen many, many pieces of and that has attached our capital improvement plan, which you will deliberate in upcoming workshops, budget workshops. And then we discuss the residential development fee increase. It wasn't an easy budget. I'm really happy with where we ended up. It didn't start that way. We started $45 million out of whack, which is a big number. Had a lot of concern about sustainability and about our ability to bridge to our next budget, which will be the beginning of a four-year financial plan. So this is a bridge year for us. We certainly didn't want to raise any revenue through the tax rate, but we didn't want to slow down on the momentum. So for the first time, I mean, you just established this, but we are using $3 million from the tax rate stabilization reserve to offset some increasing costs that otherwise would have necessitated a tax increase. We've absorbed over $4 million in this budget just on employee health insurance. We have to contribute $4 million to our self-insured fund to make it solvent this year, $4 million above what we normally do. So that's a new appropriation. We also had to absorb, which ended up being more affordable than we initially thought this time last year, absorb the new salary changes from the market study and quite a few other multimillion-dollar things that we absorbed that are articulated in the budget message. Meanwhile, we're planning this year, as we have in previous years, to get less of our money from ad valorem taxes to cover, as a percentage of budget, less is coming from taxes going forward, finding different ways to raise revenue and it's augmented by our traditionally strong sales tax economy helps reduce the amount of tax money that's going to overall expenditure. For example, in FY '23, 74% of our budget came from tax revenues and FY '26 is projected to be 68%. We didn't fund everything. You're going to have an opportunity this afternoon to talk about these things we didn't fund. There are quite a few positions that we didn't fund. We had over, I think it was 75 requested and there's, I think, 38 on this page that we didn't fund. There are also many CIP requests that were not funded. We are delaying or pausing all major improvements at parks until we get the master plan revised this year. We are doing emergency work to make sure everything stays safe. We've budgeted $250,000 for general maintenance that's not allocated to specific projects so that Doug and his crews can stay on top of pressing challenges in our parks system. We eliminated the library kiosk credit card terminal payment because we found a better way to do that with existing software. We're delaying our EMS Station 8 parking lot. This is the one that is the temporary station behind the multipurpose building so that we can improve that as one project with the multipurpose building. And we are seeking legislative appropriation for the Bearcat armored vehicle. We did not fund $790,000 worth of nonprofit requests and we did not fund any nonprofit or tourism capital requests. We're keeping an eye on jail medical costs. The board has seen this before. It is, I think, the tail that's going to wag the financial dog into 2020, well, in 2030. My general back-of-the-hand estimate, I believe this number will be close to $5 million by 2030, just taking care of our 535 inmates. Some of the things we want to do with the school system, it's more than facilities, right? It's more than facilities. We have resources on our staff that can help the school system's staff do things. We're particularly interested in helping train our teachers throughout the school system on identifying ways to help kids cope with stress that are not drugs or violence, to address and educate children about vaping and the dangers of underage alcohol use and these bad health lifestyle choices. We want to be there to educate our teachers and arm them with the tools they need to address the things they see every day. And we want to revisit the responsibilities of the school system around child protective services reporting. This board has expressed interest in being more involved with school site acquisition. We would like that articulated in a joint agreement. And we have, and you saw with cooperative extension, but also with library, museum and other places, we have lots of ways we connect with our schoolchildren. We would like to more formally recognize where those interactions are taking place and look for other opportunities to be of assistance. From here, we go across the hall and we get into some of the details. We have four budget workshops scheduled at this time. The board can have as many as they can stand between now and July, or July 1st. However, we do have a public hearing, our required public hearing for this budget is scheduled for 6:00 PM on June 16th, two weeks from today. I look forward to going with, over this with you the next couple of weeks. Look forward to working with you to make great decisions for the next year in Onslow County and further align everything we do around the strategic plan that you gave us to realize your goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. The board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting and comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. So at this time, Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir. I think it's Kevin Rouse. Is that Kevin Rouse?
I had to check with my compadre back there to see what time it was. So, good afternoon, board. I want to thank, first of all, thank you for allowing me this time. It's something I probably should have done at the previous two weeks ago to speak just a minute on the fire service in general. I am Kevin Rouse. I live at 672 Cedar Fork Road in Bullaville, North Carolina, which is located in Onslow County, but I can quickly cross to the Duplin Line if need be. I was born and raised in Backswamp and as many of you know, some of you don't, so I'm going to be very brief on it. I'm 67 years old and I grew up with Backswamp Volunteer Fire Department. It's been a part of my life for the last 67 years. Each of these agencies have a history built in. They were devised by community leaders. And when I say that, I'm going to say a few names, I'm going to leave out a bunch of people, but Mr. Golly Fountain, Dick Hood, Irvin Futral, J.D. Futral, Brett and Diane Dale, or just some of the people that were instrumental in starting Backswamp Volunteer Fire Department. I have been a small, small part in this time span. I served still, if you, I've been about 47 years in the service. If you give me two for trying to date the chief's daughter at that time, that'll make me close to 50. Don't know if you'll do that or not, but it's close to 50 years that I've been in the service. I've served 30 of that in high administrative for Backswamp. I served 20 years as chief, I've served deputy chief, assistant chief, been on the board, I'm not currently on the board of Backswamp. What I'm trying to say is, and I look at the figure of 1734, Onslow County has had a great history throughout. Commonwealth of Onslow, I think it is, tells that from the word go. These fire departments, all of them, and I speak because I was a zone representative for the Northwestern Corridor, which put me on the fire commission for several terms, the fire rescue commission for several terms. I was on the radio study commission, the emergency responder planning session, I sat on that. What I'm trying to say is, and long and short the story, the press release that was put out and Chief Mac McDonald, former chief of Half Moon, touched on this some at the last meeting. But, folks, those figures, those dates are skewed. I couldn't bring my book because I realized there's no place to put it here. But I have documentation, I've shared that documentation of when Backswamp became a six. It was 1994. At that time, the residents of Onslow County got the full benefit of homeowner's insurance at that time. We're talking 17 years before the emergency responder program even started. In essence, and I've touched base with several of you, please, all these agencies have a built-in history. The Thomas family of Arona, Glenn Taylor at Southwest, the Peddways from Roadstown. We're talking 50 years ago, people that I served with, grieved with, ate with, trained with. Please, I just ask you to revisit this, make the history for these departments what it is. And I've got proof in my little book back there. Mac had proof the night that he was here, Ricky Hardeston, Chief Hardeston, which by the way, is having his ISO survey today as we speak. So keep him in your prayers as well. But at the end of the day, I would ask that you revisit this. I'm sure I'm not saying that y'all made that press release, somebody did and they just, all those people that I have mentioned and all over the county, it's not giving them credit for what they did 17, 20 years ago. I want to thank you once again. I hope you have a blessed day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Susan Jardine.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Jardine. I live in the Greystone Development and I'm going to talk about something that y'all know about and you've all been trying to work for us. And I don't want to talk about it, but my mama told me a squeaky wheel gets the oil, so here I am. And it's about orphan roads. And I have to say, I was very happy to see that something was being looked at to help everyone, not just people in Greystone, but all over the county with this terrible problem. And I know for most people, it doesn't seem like much of an issue, but I guarantee if you take a turn off Pony Farm Road and you drive down the Greystone Development, you will be horrified at the condition of the roads. As you all know, roads degrade. The base of the road is now so degraded that no matter what me, my husband, the residents do, everything that is done to pave those roads washes out because there's no stability underneath. And there's no way to do that unless the roads are totally renovated. And the frustration that me and my co-residents have is that we never got answers on how to pursue. Because I know when I moved into the development, it was already an established development and I was one of the last homes put in ironically at the front of the development, but I was one of the last ones. I didn't know that the roads were not going to be maintained. I didn't know that it was up to residents to take care of it until my children went to school and a bus wouldn't go down the road because it was not, because it was considered a private road. That's when I found out. And from that moment on, the development, people in the development have been trying and trying to get them turned over for state maintenance. And we were always told, it's that person, it's, no, we don't do it, it's that. And we're totally confused. We've done petitions, we've sent them. It's been over 30 years and nothing's been done and we have no answer. The problem is, we're not rich people, we live in a middle-class development and some of those, not a majority anymore, but a great deal of those homes are rentals. And so that makes it even more difficult because if you're renting a home, the owner doesn't really care that the renter has to drive down, you know, a horrible road. It's so bad that even UPS drivers don't want to come down there. It's just terrible. And I actually did a video and sent it to LaSara and that he was looking into getting something done. But I know at this level, there's not a lot that you can do, but again, I'm squeaking and bringing up the subject and asking that if there is any way that you can influence the people who can fix this to vote for and approve the orphan bill, orphan roads bill that has been put up and shoved away so many years. It's been just totally ignored. And it's, like I said, we're not the only people in the county to have this problem, but I just need to come to every meeting and just bug you, if that's the word. My whole development is behind this. I know we've had 75% people sign off on petitions to do some, to do things and if there's any way that you can help us at this level, we would certainly appreciate it. And I do want to bring up that although there is something on the budget, $2 million for orphan roads, I do have to say that years ago, we had estimates just for the Greystone Development and it was over a million and a half dollars. So at this point in time, I'm sure that that would be 2 million or over. So I do appreciate that, but I just want to bring to, to let you know how devastating it is and how frustrated we are. And I hope that there's something that you can do for us. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jardine. Mr. Smitherman?
Mr. Chairman, there's no one else signed up, but as my understanding, there may be someone in the audience that would prey on your discretion to allow them to approach the podium. And they might be an alderman from North Topsoil Beach.
Ms. Adler put 30 seconds on the clock.
Not signed up.
Make it quick, Rick.
Talking about our Onslow Beach, one is, David, I'm glad that you're focusing on that. And as you probably know, we just did $10 million worth of beach sand in front of the southern one. And again, fixing those things I think is great, also remembering that doesn't do anything for the beach, which we have to take care of as well. So the continued support that you guys have given us, you all have given us, sorry, Lisa, for that is important because we're, right now, we're putting, a third of our budget annual revenues are going into the beach fund. And we've got a very aggressive plan to finish up in front of the northern one, which is you're going to be working and that's going to be getting sand as well. We also just committed two and a half million dollars to do that, plus we're working on a very aggressive beach plan. The board decided a couple of years ago with the help of hiring a beach engineer that, and John, you probably know this, is you can't wait 10 years to do beach projects. It's amazing. The sand doesn't stay for 10 years. And so we're very aggressive. So, David, we're glad that you're looking at that. I'm a little bit disappointed that you didn't stop by for some kind of libation when you were there, since you know where I live. But other than that, no, but the continued support and I know you've, I think you've got a little bit of money for us this year in the budget as well. But we're committing a substantial amount because as you well pointed out, although I like to think people come to North Topsoil to see me, I'm pretty sure it's the beach. And we have been in the past remiss in not taking care of that. And we've cleaned up a lot of the debt we had associated with stuff. We've just done another 10 and a half million in Phase Four. We're looking at probably over the next 30 years, several hundred million dollars worth of money that's going to have to go into it. So both the financial support is appreciated from you all that you've done. But the other thing too is getting access to state and federal grants is going to be huge for us because our game plan is to do what Topsoil did, which is, you know, if we can get a three-to-one, where we get three-to-one matching, that's going to help us a lot. So we would appreciate your help in that. Thank you for the efforts. Glad to see you're doing that and there will be sand in front of the other. Glad to see you're doing that, and there will be sand in front of the other one. We ran out of time this year because of the turtle season, as everybody knows, restrictions we can do. So again, David, thanks again, and thank everybody for all the support that you guys have shown us in the past. I keep saying guys, I'm sorry, Lisa, that you all have shown us in the past and hopefully in the future. And that includes all the stuff that you all have done to help us. So thanks again.
And it was less than five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smitherman, comments?
I'm all talked out.
Commissioners, any comments? All right, so if there's no comments, we'll make-
Motion adjourned.
Wait, Mr. Commissioner, he said he was making a motion to adjourn. Comments?
Well, I just want to make some comments on budget. We got it on Friday, spent some time going through it, and just want the general public, I encourage the general public to go online and study the budget, read the budget. In the grand scheme of things, it's not that bad of a budget, but I do have some concerns. The Bear Creek situation has been a concern of mine and the cost that that brings to the budget. And I really feel like we could work with the Hubert Volunteer Fire Department as well as the Swansboro Fire Department with Chief Randall, who happens to be here today. And I think we could probably significantly reduce the county's burden there. And I could be wrong, I'm putting you on the spot, Chief Randall, but I think you even might have a plan that would help reduce some costs there. Very concerned about the growth of government in this budget. We, what I saw in this budget was a potential hire of 52 people to our county, and feel like maybe our growth of our government is outpacing the growth of our county. I'd rather see us invest into our current employees, continue to be the best-paying business in the county for the different roles. I know there are some departments that didn't benefit from the study, or some even roles that didn't benefit from the study. Although they're minor and not as many, the people themselves are important, and I want to see us take care of the current people that we have. I'm always concerned when we take money out of a fund balance to balance a budget, so that always concerns me from that perspective. And I'm going to come, I'm going to save that one for last. Some other options that I think that I hope as a board we will consider is the Carolina Museum of the Marines. I think that is very important. And the beauty of being able to support them is it can come out of our tourism dollars, which are not taxpayer dollars. And in this, now, in terms of, the other one that is a major capital request is one place, and I'm not sure that tourism dollars could be used for them, but I think they do a huge service for our county and save the county money in that perspective. Want to bring up the Fire Services Strategic Plan on that, that, since that was brought up in the budget review, I really think it is very, very critical that our volunteer services are just intertwined into the fabric of that plan. That is so critical that they are part of that, and I'm hoping that, as I think most of the contracts have been signed, is my understanding, I'm hoping that when we get past July 1st, that we can get back to the table with them and adapt that contract to the future because I just think it's the right thing to do. And Mr. Our Chief Rouse, I don't know the facts in terms of how, what was presented in terms of your ISO ratings, but I want to personally state for me is if those aren't correct, I believe that they should be corrected and it should be publicly distributed and corrected. So I agree with you on that. The work, the investigation needs to be done to make sure and validate, trust but verify, if you may, but once that trust and verification is done, I personally believe that a correction should go out, if indeed warranted. So, I'm sorry. Okay, we got some conversations down there, that's okay. So again, I will sum up my stuff as saying, I want to invest into our current employees. You guys are our greatest asset, and we need to support you guys and what we have. I'm much more interested in that than hiring new employees at this time for me, especially at the number of 52 is very concerning. And then finally, my last comment that concerns me is that there's no tax cut in this, and I feel like that we are financially stable, we are financially wealthy as a county, and I believe there's money that we could give back to the citizens of our county. We're not allowed to do a rebate, but we, what we could do is do a tax cut, and I do believe that we are financially healthy enough to be able to do that. So thank you for everybody that's here today, and I appreciate y'all, and have a good one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, you said you wanted to-
Yeah, just real quick, I want to thank the people that came today to speak. Rick, liked what you had to say with some of those snide comments, I liked it. I want to thank Social Services for Elderly Month, our proclamation, because that is important, and I appreciate the work. Ms. Thigpen, you're sitting there, and I've been to a couple of your events, they're always exciting, especially with the foster care parents, so well done. I really appreciate that. Real quick, so we can go and do our budget meetings, I just want to give a big thank you to Mr. Smitherman and our staff, to include Brett, our attorney. I see some of the division heads here, like Harry and Ben, and I don't know where Janelle is, there she is. You know, the budget process is a long process. It starts not in January, it starts probably in November is when we start thinking about the budget. And to do a budget that is, as you could see today, that's as extensive as ours, there's going to be some people upset, and there are going to be some people not so, so happy, or not, or some of them are going to be happy about what we do and what we can't do, but we're working within strict confinements, and you have to work with what you have. And I commend David for finding innovative ways and techniques and procedures to try to get around some of the things and to project out. That's the important thing. You need to look at the budget, not in short term, but long term. Do we have sustainability in our budget? Yes, we do. Do we have a healthy general fund? Yes, we do. As you can see, our unassigned general fund is over $35 million, I think it is, which is pretty, pretty good, pretty good. Actually, it's real good, and we have money for our contingency plan. So all in all, I just want to say thank you to the staff for the hard work. We're going into our budget workshop after this meeting. We have several other workshops. I know this has played an important role in a lot of people's minds, especially Paul with Fire Rescue. I want to thank him, Tony, Lisa, and the chairman for putting their efforts into the Fire Rescue Volunteer Agreement, and I appreciate all you guys and what you've done and the hard work. And I know it kept some of you up. I know it especially kept you up, Paul. And so when you sit here and look at the commissioners and think that we make decisions, just know this, the commissioners here, all of us, we're all human. We do have feelings, we do look at things, and you know, when something, a policy or budget bolides, or to the point where we can't get sleep, or we're having problems sleeping, believe it or not, that's not an excuse, that actually happens. And I've been doing this now for 10 years, nine years, Paul, a lot longer. Some of us have been on the board for a while. It does keep us up at night, so we're trying to do the very best job we can. And again, thank you, David, for an outstanding job, and I look forward to our workshop. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Rouse, and thank you, Ms. Jardine, and Rick, we appreciate y'all speaking this morning. And motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.